Hear ye, hear ye. The Hammond County Commission is now in session. The Honorable Chris Kutchall presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank everyone for being here for our Hammond County Legislative Body regular scheduled meeting this December the 14th, 2023. As we get started, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ahern, please, if you would lead us in prayer.
Our scripture verse this evening is from Luke, Chapter 2, Verse 10. "And the angels said to them, Fear not, for behold our bringing good tidies and great joy, which shall be to all people," that's Lord's Prayer. To heaven and father, just thank you for this season. Jesus, thank you because you are the reason. Lord, help us to be strong this evening as we try to serve our community. Lord, thank you for all that you've done in all of our lives. In your sweet name you pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Commissioner Doty, would you lead us in the allegiance, please?
Place the flag. Attention. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Commissioner Reed. I can see you. I know you're here. You look good.
Twelve present.
Okay, folks, we've got 12 present, two out, so we will continue with our business. As we get started tonight, I'd like to call to the well Hammond County Sheriff's Deputy Lieutenant Eddie Hefner, Marstown Firefighter Austin Rutherford, firefighter Danny Case, firefighter Brad Richardson, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant Brad Gilmer, Deputy Sheriff Wesley Blevins, Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant Statler Collins, paramedic J.R. Johnson, and EMT Todd Lewis. Please, excuse me, what did I say? I meant Thompson, if I said Johnson. Okay, gentlemen, thank y'all for being here, and I'd also like to call Sheriff Mullins to the well, please. Commissioner Doty, would you please meet me there? If it would please everyone, just turn around and face me on. My bad, yeah. Back up, back up. Back up this way. Yeah, yeah. Well, as we get going here, folks, I've got a statement that I need to read. Bear with me, please. We'd like to take a few minutes to recognize the bravery and heroism of some of the first responders who worked a fire at the home of Deputy Sheriff Lieutenant Eddie Hefner a couple of months ago. In the early evening of October 22nd, Hammond County Sheriff's Deputy Lieutenant Statler Collins, Brad Gilmer, and Wesley Blevins responded to an emergency call for a house fire at the home of Lieutenant Hefner. As the deputies arrived, they found smoke and flames bellowing from the house, and they learned someone was trapped inside. Lieutenant Collins turned off the propane gas near a rear window, and deputies Blevins and Gilmer entered the home and advanced a short way down the hall toward the bedroom where they had to turn back because the smoke was too thick. Marstown firefighter Austin Rutherford arrived after hearing about the fire as he was leaving church nearby. Austin borrowed the firefighting gear and air pack of Chief Hickman of the West Hammond County Volunteer Fire Department and entered the house with volunteer fireman Danny Case of South and Brad Richardson of West. Through the thick smoke, they searched the hallway into the back bedroom and eventually found Lieutenant Hefner's mother, Pam McElhaney. She was in the floor of the bathroom where she had crawled. Austin picked her up, took her out of the house with firefighters Case and Richardson, so EMS personnel J.R. Thompson and Todd Lewis could treat her. Although Ms. McElhaney passed away a few days later, the courageous first responders used their training and instinct to save Ms. McElhaney, giving her the opportunity to speak with her son and family again. We're here today to recognize them with a certificate of recognition from this Hammond County Commission for their heroism. Commissioner Doty?
When I heard about this situation, I requested with the county mayor, and we discussed, and we decided upon this. This is a place that touches very close to my heart. I know most of these guys, especially the older ones, and this basically starts for most people as a volunteer thing. I know with J.R., I know with Danny, I know with myself, a lot of others. We started volunteering, Volunteer Rescue Squad, Volunteer Fire Departments. It is a calling that these folks have. They feel the need to help people, and we need to say thank you when we have the opportunity.
Sheriff Mullins?
I just want to say, as always, job well done, these guys. It don't matter if it's in the city, the county, we all work together, just like on this incident, and they get out there and do what they do.
And finally, that I don't think either one of these gentlemen up here asked to be recognized. This is out of our humbleness of what they do, to honor them. Thank you, guys, for your heroism and for being there. In that, we'd like to present some certificates. Paramedic Deborah Johnson. Chair Thompson. I wonder if that Mr. Thank you, Dennis. All right, we're through our calendar number one. We'll go to calendar number two, public comment regarding general non-agenda items. If anyone would like to... Yes, thank you, Kyle. I see you're here twice, and you will have three minutes total, is what you will have.
Thank you, commissioners.
Yes.
Again, about the noise, again, you know, the little bit of drop, because there's a problem in the counting and everything else. You know, we got laws in the book, you know, about barking animals, you know. Tennessee's got a Title 10, which discusses about barking dogs. It's also, we got another law about vehicle loud noise. You can't hear from a vehicle more than 50 feet, and that's in Title 55, Chapter 8, Part 1, 8. And also Title 29, which covers the nuisance law of the state of Tennessee. I think it's time we move on. I know we got the resolution, but it's time we move and get something more firm in place. And because we're coming from behind, we're not gonna be able to catch up, and it's gonna be a bigger problem at all. Uh, thank you. Next item, we'll go, next one? Next one is about public right-of-way on streets to parking, you know. I think sometimes cars park on both sides, and it's tough enough when you're a car, or you've got an emergency vehicle, you've got to get in, they've got to go real slow, and seconds count. You know, we just congratulated a bunch of firemen getting in there, it's seconds count, where you've got to get a fire truck in when you've got two vehicles parked on each side. Also, I found out a few months ago, we have no actual laws on people parking. Some people park on the street thinking it's a free parking, basically, instead of parking there on yard. And we talked about the driveways with the rocks being dangerous. Well, this is also dangerous when you've got people parking. Kids run out in the middle of the street, or they think of it as like a junkyard. We've got one on our street that's parked there, it's been there a year and a half, hasn't moved, and it's unwritable. So we need to consider something like this, because it is a hazard, and it is dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we recognize Lyndon Noe.
Lyndon Noe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to talk about rules. I'd like you to reconsider the, what you call, or what I call, the cameras in the back rule. At the school board, they had no problem with taping with a cellphone or with a small, like, camera that I have used before. The city has never objected. They do have a rule similar to yours, but they have not enforced it because there's no disruption. There is no disruption. Go to the planning commission, there's no problem. Go to the joint economic board, the industrial development board. Frankly, this is the only board that I know of, or commission, whatever you want to refer to yourself, that gets bent out of shape by someone holding a small, palm-sized camera or cellphone. And you might say, well, we tape our meetings. Yes, you do. That started when I was on commission back in 2002, early 2003. And then you started taping your committee meetings, finally, in December of 2020. But there are people who want to tape just portions of your meeting, or perhaps they want to focus on some thing or someone other than what your camera focuses on. So, because there is no disruption, I ask that you go back and look at that and consider what all these other boards... Of course, I fear that now you're going to run to the boards and say, all right, you all need to start having a strict no-cellphone rule, and if you do, that's just the way you roll. But I would like you to consider putting that back in the Rules Committee and recognize cellphones are a common thing. Everybody has one, and they're silent, there's no light. Loosen up. Let people have a cellphone and tape portions of your meeting if they choose to, or your whole meeting. Perhaps they want a different angle. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there, that was all we had that had signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission for general comments on non-agenda Seeing none, we will move to 2B, public comments for comments regarding agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak to an agenda item? Seeing none, we will move to item 3, which we have no nominations or appointments. Item 4, Chairman Doty, the Calendar Rules Committee, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Yeah, okay. Oh. We have a motion. We do have a second on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item 4B is approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
This motion passes. You good?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Moving on, item 5, we have nothing. Item 6, the approval of the consent calendar. I need a motion. We have a motion? We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the approval of the consent calendar? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes. Item 7, Finance Committee Chairman Bobby Hawn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, new automated garbage truck purchase, I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yea, one nay.
This motion passes.
Item 7B, funding for paving section of Warrensburg Road, I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7C, state of Tennessee, 2023 annual inflation adjustment of the financial assurance for Hammond County and the city of Marstown Landfields. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item 7D, Resolution 2346, a resolution to authorize cooperative purchasing agreements with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, also known as HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program for the use and benefit of all local county departments, and I make that a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Howe?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the shredder. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, the county will be taking care of it, and no money coming from the city, am I right?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm thinking the agreement, this is under the Marstown-Hammond County Solid Waste, and it is a joint agreement.
Yeah, solid waste funds are back.
Yes.
We're just the responsible party.
Okay.
We are the responsible party, Commissioner Howe, and then, as Commissioner Richardson said, they reimburse from their funds.
All right, and remind me, now, they're shredding, is it the tires?
Let's yield to Commissioner Horner here. He's on the solid waste board.
It is a shredder. It will shred tires. It's just about, I mean, it will shred a tire with the wheel itself on it. The savings is going to come if it was put in length itself and spaced.
Right.
Plus, if it's a burner that we currently have, it's entirely repaired, it's going to be $100,000 dollars. Has to be moved, which is a cost. There's some much fishing involved, that's $5,000, $5,000 a month, which is another $60,000. Plus the operator factor, the train, two times a year, a thousand dollars, because it's a five, it's going there. That all goes, this is 900,000.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Horner. Commissioner Howe, are you?
Yes, sir.
You good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any more discussion on this item? Let's vote this item, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7E, Resolution 2347, Resolution authorizing capital outlay note for the purchase of shredder for solid waste systems. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yea, one nay.
This motion passes.
Item 7F1, Hammond County Department of Education Budget Amendment Number 4, an increase of $274,744.28. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7F2, Fund 101, Drug Court, $25,984. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7F3, Fund 101, Drug Court, $1,100. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item 7F4, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, $50,500, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
This motion passes.
Item 7F5, Fund 116, Garbage Sanitation Department, $405,767.27. I make that motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7F6, Fund 176, Highway Capital Projects Fund, $250,000, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
Item 7F7, Fund 171, General Capital Projects Fund, $915,000, and I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hawn of the Finance Committee. We now move into number 8, Public Service Committee Chairman Mike Richardson, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, sir. A approval of the 2023 Hammond County road list, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Twelve yea, zero nay.
And that motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Richardson. That concludes our business. Our next meeting schedule, January committee meetings is January the 8th. Our next commission meeting, January the 18th, both at 5:00 in this room. I want to wish each and everybody and their families a Merry Christmas. Hope all is well, and everyone enjoys their time. Yes, Commissioner. Thank you. Road Commissioner David Rich's mother passed away this week. Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner, Chairman Kutchall, remember Ms. Neesmith. Remember Ms. Neesmith?
Yes, yes, okay.
She's in rehab at life care, if I remember correctly. So remember them, please.
All right. If you'll permit me, I'd like to close us in prayer, then. Is there anyone else? Is, is, is there anyone else?
Commissioner Green, is she at life care or is she at Heritage?
She's at life care.
Okay.
The one beside where Kmart used to be down by Royal King.
That was my mistake.
Mine's clear. Just stand up. Our most gracious heavenly Father, God, we thank you again for this blessed day. We thank you for all the provisions of life that you give us, and, and to be able to come together and discuss to do your business. We thank you, God, for these things, but we're in a, a time of year, God, we'd love to honor you for the salvation that you bring, brought into the world. Thank you for your son, Jesus. But especially at this time, God, we'd like for you to be with those families that are hurting, Commissioner Neesmith's wife. We would pray, God, that your hand be upon her and be with him, Father, for healing, for comfort, God, that peace be upon them in all that they do. I'm, I'm certain it's a trying time, so we do pray that that strength be upon them, Lord God, and, and for the David Rich family and losing his mother this week, and, God, we, we know that she's been a great mother, wonderful family. God, we just pray that you be with these sons that are left, that they can cherish their mother tonight, and, God, we just pray that you be with them, and again, give them the comfort and peace that only you could provide. Thank you for all these things. It's in Jesus's name that I pray. Amen. Thank y'all for being here.
Merry Christmas.
Hey, you did.
Thank you for my...
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. You're welcome. You have a lovely... Has your son moved in yet?
No. It's Christmas, and there's too much confusion going on.
Yeah.